We'll move right into the city manager's report on issues raised at prior council meetings.
None at this time.
Special event applications, Lysia.
First application before you this evening is for the Zombie Walk to be held on October 6th. Next is the Jersey Shore Oktoberfest to be held October 4th through the 8th. Asbury Angels, the plaque ceremony would be held on October 7th. Toast pancake run on October 28th. Next is a request from the Board of Education to use the city date for the 2018 New Jersey Girl State Wrestling Championship. They would like to use Convention Hall for that. Mary's Place by the Sea would like to do their Walk-a-thon on our Board Walk on September 22nd. The next application, the event is actually canceled. The Greek Holy Cross Celebration is canceled for this year.
Really?
Yeah, due to the weather. Yeah, they thought it'd be best to cancel. Hackensack Meridian Gala is seeking road closures for their event in Convention Hall on the 21st. And lastly, we have a wedding to be held on October 21st on First Evans Beach. Are there any questions? Thank you.
All right, the next item is the proclamation, proclamation which will be rescheduled to the next meeting. And then we're up to items for, to be presented by. Bob Dorr regarding Leave Only Your Footprint Program.
Thanks for coming.
If I may, I have some flyers to be attached with. This way you have an idea. Don't break my character. Good evening. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. My name is Bob Dorr. I am the ex-president of the Manasquan Board Writers Club. I'm very happy to say that. But we had started the program a while ago and it has taken off, to say the least. Please Leave Only Your Footprints Program has been around for a year or so and we presented it initially to Manasquan. It has been picked up very quickly there. It's a much, I'll give you a quick background of the Manasquan Board Writers Club. We started about three years ago. We're a 501(c)(3) organization, not-for-profit, made up of serving advocates for beach usage, safe surfing, and the management and running of the Manasquan Classic Lawn Board Contest, which is in its 26th year as of Saturday, the 22nd of this month. I'm very proud to say. We survive it every year. But the money we receive, we receive and raise during the course of the year goes back to the community 100%. We support those that support us and that is to say the EMS, ambulatory, ELKS, numerous local organizations. We donate the money directly back. In regards to this particular program, we have been able to raise quite a bit of funds in regards from New Jersey American Water, Manasquan Bank, and moreover, Service Environmental Alliance. With the support of these three, we were able to take a program from Ocean City, Maryland, where it was very, very effective, and we redesigned it. I'm in advertising and marketing, so we just took it and came up with a logo and a very simple look of two footprints in this, put a QR code on it so it goes to a specific webpage which promotes all the towns that get involved in it. The idea here is a very subliminal messaging program. It's not obtrusive. It is put on trash cans and entrance ways to the boardwalk. The idea of this is to try to change the habit. People go to the beach, they, essentially people don't want to sit on a dirty beach. But honestly, to say quite frankly, people don't really take care of themselves and they will discharge stuff anywhere. You see the Route 18, you see the various roadways. It's kind of a habit and I don't know why, but it seems to be some sort of a contest to see how much stuff you can throw out your window. But on the beach, it's a different game. And the beaches are used 24/7, all year round. At least in Manasquan, we've proposed that we have trash cans up there all year round at all the main entrances. We've gone so far as to even have dog bags put up there so that people walk their dogs on the beach they pick up after themselves. The idea here is to try to promote within the community but outward so that we try to get people to recognize that they can leave their stuff on the beach and just pick it up. Very simple message. It has been very, very effective. Manasquan says there's about a 30% change in the amount of trash they pick up. So there is, there is a notable effect. I've worked with a number of different environmental groups over my long story career and of course this idea came up. We trademarked it. The idea, of course, trademarking is just to preserve it, make sure that nobody else tries to take it and try to make a profit from it. This is a free program. We are offering the elements of this program, including these vinyl decals that go on the garbage bag, garbage cans, metal signs that get placed up along the walkways going up. We have small decal stickers that go on the cars if anybody is interested. We also have stencils that we'll give. They're made out of heavy-duty vinyl and they are, you know, you spray paint on them a cat on. So people walk by, they see it, but they don't pay attention to it. They may just go right by them. After a while, you see the message enough, and advertising, I know this, they start, they start to get it. So my offer here to the town and city of Asbury Park is that if you would like, I would be very happy to support this program in giving you all the materials free. All you gotta do is have the manpower to put it on the cams and maybe a few nuts and bolts, up they go. And we can promote this thing and push it out there. We have already gone through Avon, Bricktown, Elveron, Seabright, into other states, into Puerto Rico, and I got a weird email last week from Camera Room. They wanted, they wanted the program. I was like, okay, sure. I'm gonna change the, get everything into French until we have to do it. Still, no. I'm here tonight just to offer this program and hopefully if the city is interested, just looking in touch with somebody of the Department, I'd be glad to get all the materials over. I know See Here Now is coming to town very soon, a gentleman named Jack Johnson whom I have connections with also, who is a very big environmental advocate. Would love to see this. But at any rate, that's my proposal. Town's interested, you have my contact information on that flyer right there. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to deal with them.
No, it's a, it's a great program promoting, I think, what we already tried to promote in Asbury in a wide range of ways, which is, you know, keep the beaches clean.
So I think we're all totally for this.
Yeah.
So who do we get him in touch with? Yep, okay.
You're lucky guy.
It always seems that way.
I gather.
That was fantastic.
Does email go to you?
Yes.
So yeah, I can put Bob and Michael together. Do we need to pass a resolution or something?
No, we'll, we just need them and we'll put them up. We're gonna try to put them up strategically.
Okay.
There's a lot of signs up there so we don't want to have sign clutter and.
Exactly, exactly that. That's my other question.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for all you're doing for the entire state and Camera Room.
Hopefully the rest of New Jersey, we can get through Long Island Parks, which is next.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Coming from experience. Okay. Thank you all.
Take care.
Next on the agenda is items to be presented by Michael Manzella regarding Asbury Park.
Hello. Hello.
You?
Good evening. I know most of you guys don't know who I am, but I'm Manzella. And I am a resident of Asbury Park. And the flyers that are actually being scanded out to you guys, the Alliance for, the Alliance for Asbury Park, we're actually looking to do, bring awareness to the Asbury Park community in regards to trying to get everybody to help you with living in Asbury. This coalition has actually been effective since 2016 and a lot of our coalition members in our B S O T are actually nonprofit organizations that are within Monmouth County and our city of Asbury Park. What we're trying to do is actually bring more awareness to bring the East and the West side together as one. And what we're trying to do is actually bring out a better understanding in our community of healthier ways that our kids and our adults can actually start eating. So what we're actually proposing is to do like an open streets event. Can you explain?
Sure. So you, you know, kind of took the first two slides, but if you go to slide three, it talks about what exactly is Asbury Park Alive and what is an open streets event. Basically, an open streets event is when a city decides to temporarily close streets to automobiles and allow people to bike, walk, skate, wheelchair, all kinds of active activities in the streets. And it also changes the way people view their streets and their neighborhoods because they actually get out of a car and walk around and connect neighborhoods. There's at least 46 cities in the United States that have open streets events. Very successful one is in New Brunswick, New Jersey. They are in the third or fourth year of having what they call New Brunswick Ciclobia, which basically is where the movement started in Bogota, Columbia, where in Columbia, they close the streets on pretty much every Saturday, the long stretch of streets, and have active activities for the whole community. So the goals for the event is to promote healthy and active living, provide an opportunity to walk and ride bikes, connect communities, and most importantly, offer healthcare information screenings and educate people about healthier ways to eat, to live. And the next slide shows the ultimate goal, of course, is to use this as a mode to create One Asbury Park, eliminate barriers, make connections, strengthen communities, really bring communities together. And we have a picture here of the Better Block Event, which was held last October, which was, I think by all accounts, a very successful event, very popular event. And basically, what an open streets event is, and we're proposing here, Asbury Park Alive, is to have just a Better Block Event that stretches for a mile and a half. That's essentially the idea.
Oh, wow. Yes, wow.
Yeah. So the next slide just shows some pictures of some of the things that we would like to see at, at the event that we're planning. Art, music, food, activities for kids. The goal is to really make it unique to Asbury Park and really showcase everything that we are to the world and to our residents, right? So what happens? The streets get closed to vehicles. We are planning to have entertainment, music, games, physical activities definitely, street art and cultural demonstrations, food trucks and vendors, food is an important part of it, giveaways, and healthy food cook-offs. So over the past few months, the coalition, the Alliance for Healthier Asbury Park, has had a couple workshops led by outside professionals and consultants to, who research these events around the country. And we've talked a lot about, all right, what's the best date and time? So the date that we're looking at, and we checked with Lysia as well on this date, is Saturday, May 4th. That way, we're out of the summer season, so the road closures won't impact beach traffic. We're still warm enough to have an outside event. And then as far as the timeframe goes, one of the things we talked about was how do we limit the impact to businesses, the dinner rush, the lunch rush, but also have a time that kids, you know, they get up late on the weekends, that we make sure that they get out. So we really like the mid-afternoon timeframe of closing down the streets, 1 to 5 on that Saturday.
Actually, with our partners, we've actually partnered with a few organizations, like I said earlier, who are invested in Asbury Park, like to begin with. And a lot of them have actually been at the table from day one, participating and getting involved in our actually blueprint for becoming Alliance for Healthier Asbury Park. But we have a lot of partners within our community that are looking forward to actually coming on board and actually participating with this event. The only good thing is we do have grant money through Robert Johnson and DA Jai that we were able to allocate at least $40,000 for this event. And we actually still have, we're at like $10,000 shy. So we'll be doing fundraisers, but we'll be doing commitment events throughout the next couple of months. So we're really looking forward in regards to doing this type of an event, this huge, because we actually want to get a lot of people back on the mentality of, you know, things that we do in Asbury Park comes from Asbury Park residents and is basically from our park. This way, we can actually get everybody back on the same page in regards to being One Asbury. Because right now, we have a lot of people who are kind of separated and we consider ourselves separate but equal, and a lot of times we're not. And so from what we're, you know, what the workshop that we've dealt with, this is actually going to bring all of us on board to participate for a huge event throughout the city of Asbury Park on this one day and there's no issues, no concerns, no anything. Everybody's just coming out to have fun and improve themselves. So we do have a lot of partners. Right now, we have at least 176 organizations that are actually involved in our coalition. And then 90% of them are actually on board to bring funding, supplies, support, whatever we need to actually move forward.
Yeah, so in here we have the proposed route, which is extremely important to plan the event, obviously, in terms of organizing street closures and things like that. And there's a couple key things that we considered and we were, we were told to consider in our workshops when selecting this route. One is to touch as many of the communities in the neighborhood, in the city, as possible. The other is to have it long enough where people feel like they can get from one end to the other within a reasonable amount of time. The event's only four hours. But also not too long that people feel like there's really, you know, they'll never see it all, right? So we ended up with a route that's one and a half miles. And what's also mapped on here are the school facilities, the open space, and the houses of worship, because we really wanted to make sure to touch as many of those areas as well as possible. So the route we chose, we, you know, were proposing is not final, but I think really does a good job of cross-sectionally hitting all parts of the community, all the parks, along the houses of worship, and nearby most of the schools. So that's where we're at now. And then we have launched some marketing and social media. There's an Instagram, Twitter, website that's live now, and people can start to get on board. You can find some more information.
For Asbury, called Asbury Park Life?
Asbury Park Life.
I love it. I think it's nice.
Looking forward to it.
I think the next step is probably to sit down with Special Events Committee, start figuring out the road closures, barricades, public boards, police support. I mean, we're gonna need all of that for this event, so that's really, that's our next milestone. And for the public, I mean, if anyone is interested in, in getting involved, we really, we're gonna be soliciting for vendors, for volunteers. We hope it's gonna be a huge, successful event, so.
Great. Thank you.
Go back to the slide with partners.
Yep.
How come the city's listed?
City's partner, for sure.
Oh, okay.
I just left it off the slide.
How come the Mayor's Wellness Committee is listed?
Mayor's Wellness Committee is definitely a partner. I've been on the Boundless Fan Leadership Team for the Alliance and served as the city rep and the Mayor's Wellness Committee rep.
I know. You do an excellent job. I'm just, okay.
I'll add it.
Might as well add the recreation also.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, just so you guys know, this was actually done so we can actually get in and express and explain to you guys about this event, that there's a lot of vendors and partners that are not on this list.
Yeah.
Within the last, I guess, two weeks or so, that we've actually met with to bring to the table. But moving forward, we have, also have a concept of, in order to do a kickoff for this event, every weekend, we're gonna try to do a different event somewhere in Asbury Park to kickoff to this huge event coming up. So at the end of the day, a lot of these partners are actually gonna be representing at these events. So every week, every Saturday throughout, I guess, the first month before we actually have this event, every weekend is gonna be a different event somewhere in Asbury Park just to do a kickoff for this open streets event.
First Saturday in May, Kentucky Derby.
You'll be done well before the Derby goes off.
Yes.
No, great. I think the potential map layout is good. Also, could be a couple tweaks here and there.
Yeah.
I know some people on Cookman Avenue may want you to, to go all the way up Cookman. Maybe it will bring more business.
Yeah.
So, but no, great, great, great presentation.
Yeah, I think that with the, like, the restaurants on Cookman Avenue, what we're proposing to them is for this day of this event, if they can actually bring their restaurant out on the streets, this way you can, you can still get patrons to stop at your restaurant, but they're actually, want their tables to be outside. So, and so far, a few are actually, they're ready to, they're like on board with it, so.
Is it? Hate to be Mr. Doom and Gloom.
Nope.
Is it something you're gonna have a rain date for, or is it like?
No.
It's this date, no, okay.
No, there's no rain.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
We worked a lot with New Brunswick and heard a lot from their planners about how they do it, and they said they don't do a rain date because a lot of times, actually, they held it in light rain because people still came out.
It's just too much work to have.
And it's a lot of work to, to.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of notification, you know.
Especially for vendors and musicians and people who have other commitments.
Great job.
Nice.
How's your foot?
I have five more surgeries to go. Oh, no. That's why I've been bothering.
I always enjoy your company.
Watch every food we have.
Thank you.
We'll move on to review of agenda items for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Resolution 317 is approving the special events application, which you just heard. 318, 319, 320 are all credits and refunds to taxes, sewer or current fund taxes. Resolution 321 is accepting a $175,000 grant to secure the shore. The Police Department will be here at the next meeting to give a little bit more background of it, but this allows us to accept it and enter the $175,000 the city received as a budget line item. Resolution 322 is receipt of a grant from Monmouth County, which we've heard me mention in the past for senior services at the Senior Center. 323 is, puts, that is a Chapter 159, which puts the grant into the budget. And Resolution 324 is releasing the performance bond for 1003 Bond Street and accepting the maintenance guarantee. Is there any questions on the consent agenda items? Moving on to the individual resolutions. 325 is the payment of bills. 326 is a technical aspect of the Michael's Development Company. Currently, they receive funding from the New York Home Bank loan and they need to have another subsidiary own 1% to pass through. This is just a technicality. There is no change in any of the agreements, there's no financial changes. This is just something that has to be done for them to receive that loan. I believe 327 is being tabled, which is the appointment to the Shade Tree Commission. If not, there's an appointment to the Shade Tree Commission.
No, we're tabling that.
You're tabling that.
And just to the public news, we're tabling, we're not doing appointments until, we're not gonna do any more appointments to boards until January 2019, just so, there's only a couple months left this year, and we'll just do everybody in January. Right? I'm correct in saying?
Resolution 328 is authorizing an MREM foreclosure for a property on Monroe Avenue. The neighbor actually reached out to me saying they're interested in purchasing it and if we would start this process because they want to buy it. I believe once we send a letter to the property owner that we're starting a REM, they're gonna pay it off. But this was actually from a citizen that was looking to purchase the property. Resolutions 329 and 330 are authorizing us to enter shared purchasing and shared services with Monmouth County. These agreements are usually a couple of years in length and they've sunsetted countywide. So the county is asking all the municipalities that use them for cooperative purchasing and shared services to re-up the agreements. 331, 332, 333, 334, 335, 336, 337, 338 are all items that are off the capital surplus ordinance which was passed, which was approved at the last meeting for second reading. An ambulance radio, an air conditioner for the police department server room. Currently, right now, the air conditioner is in the hall light because it broke. We have a temporary one, but there's a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that needs to not overheat. First net-ready routers are for the mobile data terminals in the police cars. The Panasonic tablets are the mobile data terminals themselves. Those are Panasonic ToughBooks. They are weatherproof. That's why they're so much money. Shredders for police and finance, these are purchased off GSA, so it's done by resolution. 338 is a brush chipper, chipper for the Department of Public Works. Moving on, 339 and 340 are both resolutions for interfaith neighbors for projects that they're doing that this meets an affordable housing obligation of the city and that it is, complies with city plans for home funds. And then 341 is a bureaucratic nightmare because the EDA says that in order for us to receive the $67,000 grant for the firehouse, we need to show that we own the firehouse. We've told them the property's been in the city for over 130 years, we don't have feeds, and they said we'll pass a resolution by the council saying that we do own the firehouse. So this is a mere technicality of EDA. Any questions on these resolutions? What? They're coming here? Oh, hold on a second. I'll see if I got notification. The sirens you just heard, they're actually on their way here for the smell of natural gas behind the police station. So let's see if I got.
Meeting canceled.
Are we evacuating?
Not yet.
It's outside.
So it's safe there. Just blows up this way.
Hope he's ready.
Don't have the cigarette break.
For introduction, ordinance 2018-37, we're requesting it to be tabled.
What's that?
That's the sleeping in couple places ordinance.
Okay.
And we're gonna take another look at that based on the recent decision that just came down in the Ninth Circuit, U.S. Court of Appeals out West relating to a similar.
Resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance 2018-41 is for the parking utility. In discussing with Mr. Manzella and the wishes of the parking utility and parking staff, it's time for the next upgrade of software and license plate readers for residential and commercial tags. This would appropriate the money to purchase it, to have it in place by the end of the year so that January 1st, when people renew their permits, we can do it in a more efficient and better manner. The staff is also saying that in next year's, 2019 budget for the parking utility, we're going to put this money, so this is an authorization, we're not gonna actually have to borrow it. We do have cash on hand, but in order to purchase it, this is the way that needs to be. There would be a purchase resolution in November or at the end of October, depending when this advertised. And I know talking to Mr. Manzella, they're still debating on one or two vendors, but you'll have that resolution at some point in time. This authorizes the purchase of it and it will be paid off in full the next budget. 2018-4.
How many?
Excuse me.
How many?
How many what?
How many readers for $175,000?
Five. Four? Three? Three cars.
Three cars and readers or three readers?
Three readers. With, with, it's, it depends on which vendor's chosen.
Yeah. There's, so there's, there's two different vendors that have different price points. For the sake of making sure we have enough in the bond, we're putting a higher price bid there, is to outfit three vehicles with license plate readers, the associated software.
And the permitting software.
And then the, yeah, the permit software. That's really it. So we don't anticipate we're gonna spend potentially that.
The quotes are at 140, give or take. But this will allow us to make sure that there is enough money and we're gonna put it in next year's budget. But in order to get the permitting software up and running for January 1st.
Right.
We have to do this now.
Thank you.
2018-42 is of the city's chapter on environmental regulations for plastic bags and the appropriate uses. 43 is environmental regulations of the chapter invasive plants. We've had numerous issues with bamboo over the last couple of years. So working with Tom Pabinski of the Shade Tree Commission, he drafted this ordinance for your consideration. And 2018-44 is sewers. This is, the state just passed a new law for sewer connection fees and sewer fees themselves. This codifies what the state law is. The big highlights are it's based more on usage. For example, if you have a building that has an existing connection but is expanding the use, we'll say to a bar or restaurant, a car wash, this will actually allow us to collect the actual usage amount than just the flat fee. It also expands. Um, it also expanded the usages, the, the fifty percent credit for affordable housing to nonprofits and not just municipalities. Um, there is a redlined version in this, but this ordinance is basically what the state said you need to do. So we're adopting what the state told us to do. Is there any questions on the introductions?
Uh, the only thing I'll say is I made some tweaks to the invasive plant ordinance, like barriers.
We made them already.
Okay.
I didn't know what the word meant, to be honest.
And how are we getting the word out to residents about this ordinance?
Um, this would probably be one of the better ones in the municipal calendar. We'll post it on our normal channels. But it's difficult because as people move in, they're just going to plant. The bamboo is the issue. The, the poison ivy is one, but bamboo is a major, major issue.
We've got it all over our neighborhood.
Yes, it's, it's just, it's bamboo, it's horrible. Um, so we'll try to figure out, we'll work with, you know, Tom when he gets out of the hospital to, to see how we can better advertise it, but we'll just do the normal channels for now. Uh, but bamboo is the problem.
With regard to the ordinance regarding plastic bags, um, it's my understanding-
No, no, we're moving, we're introducing.
You are, okay.
And second reading is going to be tabled. Uh, twenty eighteen dash twenty-one.
The ordinance for secondary.
I knew I was talking about. No one else might have, but I did. And that's all.
All right, we'll move on to matters by city council.
Okay, so, on September twenty-second, Asbury Park will have Porch Fest once again. For those who may have been there last year, it was a lot of fun. There'll be eighteen porches, um, seventy, seventy bands, up from forty-five last year, and they're raising money for interfaith and to put a mural up opposite the train station. It's on, uh, September twenty-second, noon to six. If you look on the Porch Fest website, it'll give you a map. It's great, ride your bike, walk, get all over the town and see all this music. It's really a lot of fun. And then, um, Jersey Cento Power and Light will be hosting an energy assistant day, and it will be on September eighteenth from nine AM to six at the Salvation Army, six oh five Asbury Avenue to help folks that are having trouble paying their bills. And one more thing. The affordable housing applications and information are available at City Hall. Social Service Department has applications for Renaissance and Boston Way. That's it.
Took mine. Smart, you next. Iran. Okay. Couple of questions I'd like to ask the city manager or the council. Are we prepared for any type of storm?
Yes.
So DBW has alerted to that?
Yes, uh, DBW, code, uh, the building department. Uh, the OM coordinator's been off, so Kevin, who's the deputy, has been discussing. Our normal routine, because we do get to assess this a lot, is we look at storms really three days out, uh, because that's when the weather report will be more solid. But public work starts their work, especially along the beach, if there's ocean currents, um, five to seven days out.
I know there was a lot of floods the last couple of days, and people are curious what to do. Get out the car, call the, call DBW, call City Hall, what to do.
Monday, we've been, we've been making a conference call with the county.
If, if the car is flooded, really the only thing they can do is just wait because tow truck drivers won't go into that just because you don't know what's there, especially in flooded situations. You should be very careful because you don't know if a manhole cover has popped, and you can get your car or yourself go through a manhole. So if you see water on the street, avoid it, go around it, don't, don't drive through it.
Thank you. Question number two. Uh, that's, I would say, fourth and fifth, and a few people on Sunset have spoken out about the mail. I mean, I have mail at my house that's supposed to be downtown. What can we exactly do anything or do, can, can we do anything about that?
We've had numerous discussions with the regional postmaster. Um, Asbury Park is a training site, so people come in and then leave. Um, I think since I've been here, we're up to our seventh postmaster. The tax collector has been the point of contact with that. If you do get wrong mail, tell the tax collector because the tax bills are the most important things. So Tyrone has been the one dealing with that. Um, but it's hopeless. I, I hate to say that, but we have repeatedly had discussions, um, with the, the postmaster, with Congressman Pallone, he's been in phone calls. It's, I don't think it's ever going to change until they stop using, using the city as a training site. And the mayor's been involved, I missed anything with that?
Congressman has tried, and Congressman says, anybody has any problems, please call his office, and he'll continue to try. When a United States congressman can't beat the Asbury Park Post Office, who's up along with the system. But he has definitely tried to cure it, and it's above his pay grade.
Uh, last but not least, I'm going to put, uh, quite a few of these out here, and it says a lot about this past summer, past the summer, the spring, the fall. It all had to do with recreation, and this is like an update, and Sonia, appreciate you writing this up for them, so the public can know exactly what is the Recreation Department is doing. And if there's any questions, please contact Lisa or myself or Sonia. Marlene is also a big help in this program, along with Tarn and a few others. And we thank you for, uh, the privilege to do this. Thank you. I'm going to put these out here, if you'd like to look them over, please. Next.
On Wednesday, September twenty-sixth, from eleven to two, at the Senior Center, will be Mayor's Wellness Committee Harvest Health Fair. Hagansack Meridian will be there to provide free health screenings. Free eye screenings will be provided that day, nutrition counseling, health food demonstrations, and a healthy lunch to be provided. So it's in partnership with Visiting Nurses Association, Coral Harbor, Home Drugs, Neptune Retro, Family First Urgent Care, Socials, Community Activities Network Scan. Uh, right now, there's one of these on the desk by the seven o'clock meeting. Mr. Manzella will have more of them out on the desk, so anybody wants to pick one up, uh, please take it, and please, this is a great event, and it's for all, but we're asking people, especially at my age, over sixty, to attend because, again, to get your eyes tested, to get a free health screening, and to get a healthy lunch is something that's great for everybody. So thank you, that's all I have.
What time is it, John?
Well, pick yours up. He made one, he made one. Uh, it's Wednesday, September twenty-sixth, from eleven to two, at the Senior Center.
Okay.
There will be games and prizes and giveaways. Thank you, Mike. That's it.
Matters by the city manager?
Not at this time.
Matters by the city attorney?
And I have nothing at this time either.
All right, at this time, we'll break until seven o'clock. The city council?
Why not, yeah.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Resolution.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, reflection, please. Flag salute, flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, advocate notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and posted on a bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. This time, have a motion to open the meetings in a public, please.
Move it.
Second. Anybody who wishes to speak, please come up to the mics, state your name and address for the record, and each member has three minutes to speak.
My name is Carrie Butch, I live at, on Deal Lake Drive, five hundred Deal Lake Drive. I'm, I am a member of the Legal Women Voters, and I just wanted to share a couple of announcements that's happening. First of all, I, I feel like it's good to have on the record when the voter registration deadline is.
October sixteenth.
October sixteenth, twenty eighteen. If you want to apply by mail, you, you must, um, apply by October thirtieth. The deadline in, in person for voting by mail is three PM, November fifth, at the county clerk's office. The general election day is November sixth, from six AM to eight PM. Um, to register to vote, um, you need to be a United States citizen, at least seventeen years old. Seventeen years old, you can't vote before your eighteenth birthday. I don't want to go through everything, but I do want to share with the community resources. Right now, we have a really good website, www.lwvnj.org, which will get everybody up to speed on, on what's happening for the workshops. And then in addition, there's two local workshops that are happening on how to register voters. So that's happening tomorrow night in Ocean Township from seven to eight thirty PM at the Turner Gallery. That's basically everything you always wanted to know about registering voters but forgot to ask. So that'll be good. And then there's another one in Neptune, also co-sponsored by the Legal Women Voters of Township of Ocean, which is going to be held on... Hang on, bear with me, bear with me. It's going to be held on Wednesday, September twenty-sixth. So after you go to the mayor's thing in the morning, you could come to this, six thirty to eight thirty. There's nothing happening in Asbury, but I'm absolutely willing to put a bug in their ear to get something happening, and I actually got a quote from Peggy Dellinger saying, "You tell us where to go to register voters, and we'll be there, and we'll do a voter registration table." So if anybody would like to join me in the training tomorrow, please call me at seven three two, nine eight two, six nine four two. It's at the Turner Gallery, I'm going to be there. That's in Ocean Township, Rita, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you all about it. And then I have one more kind of cool thing I wanted to make an announcement about, and it's Christina's film, the film that we made two years ago, twenty, the twenty-two minute film that was written and directed by Christina in kind of honor of her dad, who was, who at the end of his life, um, ended up getting dementia. There's going to be a screening on September twenty-fifth at seven PM at Anthology Film Archives, which is on Second Avenue in New York. It's kind of a cool venue, it's a historic center, it's an indie avant-garde center. It's hosted by the New York Women in Film and Television. Okay, I'm done. Okay, thank you very much. No, just, just, uh, understand, it's a beautiful film, it's a, we got a lot of support from the, the mayor and council, come, being here, um, we would love it. If anybody wants to sign up, it's only twelve dollars. And, um, there's a Q and A afterwards, so all the actors are there. And there's going to be more on the film coming up. So, um, let's get ready for that, and let's continue to support Christina. We get to see Rita's porch in the film, the beautiful Asbury Park, Cookman Avenue. Wonderful, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I talked about this the last time. You pass all these ordinances, but you seem to break them at one time or another. And I could see you've broken about three of them. One of them is the, uh, on Banks Avenue, where you have something that looks like a dumpster, and it's supposed to have flowers in it. Uh, the ordinance says that you have to pay twenty dollars a day for the meter, and I don't think anybody's paying the meter there. I know a lot of people have to get dumpsters, and if they buy a meter, they have to pay twenty dollars a day. So that's one ordinance you broke. The other one is when people rent space in Bradley Park or any other city place, any park, they have to pay ten days before the event. Well, we don't seem to be doing that. That's the second ordinance that you broke. The third one is the, the sign ordinance, which was revised this week. I don't know why, but it talks about banners, that you have to get permission to put up a banner. Well, you have a big one across the street, and I don't know if they did get permission to put up the banner and if they paid for the permit. That was the third one. And that's what I'd like to know. Why are we breaking our own ordinances? It's the law of the city, isn't it? And, you know, if you're going to break the ordinance, then we can break it. You're not going to abide by it. I mean, Banks Avenue is not a great street, why do we have that sitting there? We have all these parks and lakes and boardwalk where people could sit, as they say, chit chat, instead of having that on Banks Avenue and losing twenty dollars a day. It's a hundred and forty a week, multiply that by a month, and you've got a big number there. So what are we going to do about it? Any answers? I don't like silence.
Not until you're done. Not until you're done.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So the parklet was requested to be put there, it was put there, and it was-
Could you talk louder, please?
I apologize. The dumpster you referred to that we call parklet was requested to be put there, and so we honored that request, and if the city's bearing the cost of it, the city's bearing the cost of it. The other two, I don't know if Johnny Mac got a permit, I can't tell you. I'm over the first one we broke. What was the first ordinance we broke?
It's a banner, it's a park.
So why do we have ordinances?
The first one was dumpster.
Which is really the part where-
The second one was not paying special events in ten days, and then the second one is Johnny Mac was-
Okay, the special events in ten days, you're, you're right, that hasn't been enforced, and that's something that special events is being tweaked and looked at and being redone. So we do not use the term break the ordinance, so we do not... It's a bad term, so we do not make mistakes in the future. So that's being looked at.
Well, if you have a banner up that says thirty days, that's been up longer than thirty days.
I, I can't tell you, the zoning officer isn't here, I can't tell you if they got a permit. You can call tomorrow and ask.
Well, it's something to look at. I mean, if you're going to create, tonight you're creating more ordinances, nobody pays attention to them, especially the council. They broke all three of those, and I haven't gone through the rest of them to really see if you're abiding by all the rules. I mean, if we have to, you have to too. No?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
Louise Murray, sixteen oh four Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. I just want a little understanding, more clarification on the billing. Could you tell me what S H I International Corp. is? So I can understand the bills a little better. And Optimum, um, pops up in a couple of the departments, and I'd like to know what that's for. And... Did we purchase two vehicles? Because it says quotes, and I don't know whether a quote means you're looking or you actually purchased it. The two Fords, I was just curious about that, because S H I also comes up as quotes, but it looks like they're all bills. And the other thing is, could you repeat that again, John? Did we, more or less, because someone requested, whatever that thing is, that we went along with it? Are we paying for it, the city, or we're just washing it out or what?
Just basically washing it out because we could do a report on how much that one spot takes in a year, and it's somewhere close to the number Rita's talking about because that block is basically empty five days a week, so on weekend nights, we may be losing a little bit of money. But as far as the goodwill and the people requesting, definitely offsets that little bit of money.
The city also built it, I mean, and volunteers.
Excuse me.
And someone said to me that that, what do you call it, a parket?
It's a parklet.
Parklet. Someone told me that that was placed someplace else in the city, in front of somebody's store, and they just moved it over. What other part of the city was it sitting?
It was, it was on a different street last year.
It was on Cookman for a while.
And it was also on Springwood Ave.
It's also outside the building here.
It's been moved around, and you know what? That's a place where people gather to talk, the same way Rita's deli used to be. It used to be a place where people used to go and gather and talk, and this is-
They're gathering around a block block.
Rita? Rita, yeah?
She's talking to Mercy.
Okay, so anyway.
I guess that would be me.
She's not talking, it's Ily, Rita. I see someone talking to you.
Anyway. We need a little levity in this place, I'll tell you. What's S H I?
As long as we can all keep on laughing.
Not S H I, that's, that's what's on.
Where, where it says quote, you're right, that means, it should, it's, I don't know why it said that.
It's just the way it prints them, or it's built.
But yes, that means they were bought of their own bills and claims.
Okay, we actually bought them.
And as far as the two, I'll let Michael explain what they are and why they're divided over many departments.
over many departments.
SHI is... I was unconscious. SHI is a computer and software vendor. They're state and federal contract.
Okay.
Phenomenal company. I can't endorse them, but they are phenomenal. They're lower pricing than anyone else, because they don't charge for shipping. Every other computer company that's on state contract charges for shipping, they don't. We only pay for shipping, and they pay for shipping. So it's so much cheaper than anywhere else. They've been on the list since March. Optimum is internet cable phone. There's a couple places around the city that we don't have a fiber network up and running, and not going to. So that we pay for Optimum to handle that.
Okay.
And then the vehicles are... one was code and one was for construction.
Okay. Because when I saw a quote, I said, "Did we or didn't?"
It's just the way it runs the system.
All right.
If it's on the bill list, it is a bill.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Leahy from Fifth Avenue. I have several things that I want to mention. One of the first ones is recycling. I want to know if there's any, there are any officers that go around checking people's garbage? When I put my garbage out, I have a little bag about this big, and some of my neighbors have... they're single people, and they have bags and bags of garbage. So is there, isn't there some ordinance that you're supposed to recycle? And can't they be fined if they're not doing it?
Well, then you finish all your questions, and then we'll answer them.
Okay. And then another thing is, there is a code that I found a couple of years ago about garbage cans that are in front of the house or on the side of the house where they show from the street, and they've been there for ages. Nobody's looking into that and telling them to put them in the back. That's the second thing. The other one is leaf blowers. They are the lazy man's tool. That's the only way I could describe them. Nobody knows how to use a rake or a broom anymore. And some of the people who come around where I live, they're blowing all these carcinogens all around the neighborhood. They're not even wearing masks when they do it. And plus the fact that they are extremely noisy when you have a little piece of property and you have three people blowing, blowing everything in the street, and then they go out in the street and they blow it back into a pile. It's crazy. So anyway, that's the blowers. And bicycles. That's another one that during the summer, it was horrendous. The people that don't seem to have any rules of the road when it comes to their bicycles, they're shooting at in front of you in your car, and they're on the wrong side of the street. You're supposed to be riding with traffic, not against traffic. It's just, they don't have lights on their bikes at night, and sometimes you can't even see them. So I guess that about covers it for now. All complaints.
Thank you, Linda. Michael, did you want to answer the recycling?
Right now, we don't have an officer. We've had two or three this year. It's a part-time job, and it doesn't pay that well, quite honestly. So people just come and go once they find a full-time job. The garbage and recycling, right now, the recycling market, there's a great article in New Jersey Spotlight yesterday about recycling. Since China stopped accepting things, it's dropped the price. A couple of years ago, you'd be able to get $90 for a ton of paper. Now it's a dollar. So it's been a mess, and where it's actually a price point where it's cheaper to throw it out. So recycling nationwide has been a problem. We still want people to recycle, but without the inspectors sort of a little bit more. We try to hire inspectors and we can't. The garbage can locations, I don't know off the top of my head. I'll look in the property records code to see where they're supposed to be. The bicycles, that's education, and people riding a bike responsibly. I don't know what we can do about that. And leaf blowers, in North Jersey, a bunch of municipalities have banned them, and landscapers sued the bans, and it will... it started at like 9:00. And that's been making its way through the courts. So I wouldn't recommend any sort of policy until that actually gets decided, because it might get overturned or changed. But it is a problem. We probably get a complaint every twice a month about it.
That's all?
That's all. But it's making its way through the courts in North Jersey. So I've been watching, because it is annoying.
It is very annoying.
Until someone, until a judge says you can ban it, you can't ban it, restrict it, there's no point in doing anything. We'll just lose us.
So you can't, with the recycling, you can't pay somebody a little more to be more responsible about the environment? With the plastic and the cans?
We've talked about that. We pay for that out of the clean communities grant, and there's certain allocation of administration and staff and capital improvements that we always thought of against it. So it would have to come out of the regular budget, which we don't have that sort of funding right now. A lot of our positions are that happens. Biggest example is we always meet crossing yards. We take $10.50 an hour for crossing yards, and we get $0.50 raised. All this around the town started with $10. So Asbury residents come here, they get a year to experience, and they go make $15 somewhere else. So we're slowly trying to increase these salaries, because we believe you can't make $5, $10 an hour more and... So it's a problem, it's a budgetary issue, but that's going to take some time. It's across the cities, you know, part-time employees, it's not just the recycling, the crossing yards. The part-timers compared to everyone else are harder on the team.
How about some of the homeless people? You give them some kind of a job, so they'd have...
They have to apply, and they have to be trained, and they have to show up. So I'll talk to social services to see if we can get something like that, but it's difficult.
That would be great. Thank you.
Jen Sprow, Second Avenue. Two things. As a downtown merchant, I would just like to... the unsung heroes of DPW during the summer has been pretty incredible. And the person that I talk to a lot early morning is a man named Jesse, who I've worked with through the Quality of Life Committee. He's out there with his little picker-upper, and he does a really great job of keeping downtown Asbury Park clean. And this summer's been really great from that perspective, particularly on the weekends after what goes on on Saturday night. I have to say, they've really been terrific at making sure everything was great for people who come to town. And he talks about how much he loves his job and he really wants to make it look great. So I don't know who can send that message to DPW, but they're doing a great job. Thank you so much. Secondly, the so-called dumpsters, it offends me when that word is used regarding those... don't t-me, Rita. Regarding those parklets. We have, there are those of us downtown that really, really want those in front of our store. In fact, we beg the chamber to see if they can put them in front of our store, because every time they're downtown, and I haven't seen a lot of you downtown, to experience when you see people sitting there, eating ice cream and talking, buying things from our store because they have a place. And we've had people that say they would like to read a book in one of them. So they really bring a lot of spark and beauty and energy to downtown. And I think it's the trade-off for a parking place to me is really, really makes sense, because I think it's a town that a lot of people have sometimes a misperception about its bars, its restaurants. And when they come here, they experience something else. So I think that it offends me, and I think others downtown, when we refer to them as ugly or dumpsters or in the way. They really matter for those of us that have businesses downtown who are struggling still. We're 10-years-old words, which we're pretty proud of. We still make no money. We are there partly because we love this community, we love what we do, and things like parklets create uniqueness in our community. So from my perspective, and many others of us down there, and we begged Sylvia to move it in front of our store, and I know she has lots of other requests, because it's considered something that's really valuable to the community and not something that's ugly. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm going to just kind of piggyback a little bit on what Jen said. We have had...
What's your name?
I'm sorry. It's Sylvia. Sylvia, Chamber of Commerce. We have had quite a few numbers of requests for me to move the parklet in front of a number of businesses, which I would do, but I don't own it. And I would love to see a program, if it is possible, at some point where maybe we could do. I could just see that parklet in front of Jen's store and people reading in there. I think it would be spectacular. It was in front of the chamber for quite a while, and I loved it. I ate out there every day, and people came and they did sit and talk and meet each other. And it is, it makes a nice reflection from the business, from the merchant's perspective, although I'm not a resident here, so I can't speak to that. But I confirm what Jen said. We do have a lot of requests for it. And then on to the next thing is, Jen mentioned DPW, and that's actually why I'm here at DPW and the Fire Department and Police Department and EMT. I cannot thank them all enough for how much they helped with Oyster Fest this past weekend and really with the support they give the chamber all of the time. And then bridge that into the five of you. As, you know, we're a hybrid chamber. We're not just networking and supporting commerce, although that is our mission. This being a tourism town, we try to bridge the gap of having a tourism branch of the municipality, and we try to work in tangent with the municipality. And you guys, Jesse came out there in the rain hanging signs for me in his free time. And John, I see you, I saw you there and just walking around and trying to, you know, talk about Asbury to a lot of people. And Eileen, you were always there, spray painting the parking spaces before you go to your office in the morning. And Yvonne, even though you were away, you reached out to me to wish me good luck. And then it rained a little bit, and Amy tweeted, "We're still here," and everybody came. I can't thank you all enough.
Maybe I have to do that on November 6th, when I sing about...
It was unbelievable. You guys, between the departments here and you guys, you carried Saturday for us, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but I did have to cancel Sunday. I assessed the wind circumstance, and I just didn't think it was safe to let the vendors stay there and let consumers come. And there's really no revenue that's worth it to me to see anybody get hurt. So it was a little devastating, probably, from our budgetary standpoint, but hopefully Saturday carries it through. And I will come up with other things, because this is Asbury, and we survive. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job on the event, Sylvia. Really great job.
Really, yeah.
Yay.
I had friends come from North Jersey, and they said it was fabulous. It didn't matter. It was great. So thank you.
They just kept coming. And they're ready, which is just...
That was amazing. Sorry, just, first of all, thank you, Councilmember Chapman, for your...
State your name and address.
Sorry, Jordan Modell, 1001 Second Avenue. Thank you for mentioning Porch Fest. Porch Fest is on again September 22nd. The only thing I'd like to add, just three quick things. One is, we've expanded the number of porches, especially on the west side. So we're trying to really show the world that Asbury offense is more than just Cookman. We love Cookman, but that there are parks, there are greenery, there is a whole side of Asbury that we want people to see. We've gone from 39 vans to almost 70 vans, and we actually had to turn vans away at the last minute. So it was, it's been, the response has been fabulous. If you can, it's apporchfest.org is the website. We're selling T-shirts. All, 100% of the proceeds go to either Interfaith, a fabulous organization, or to help support the mural to be done perhaps at the train station. And if anybody can volunteer to help put up posters and give out postcards to restaurants, it's jordan@archive.org is my email, or just call me at 646-675-6002, or just tap me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, I don't want to break any more ordinances. You only get one chance to talk, because we've been scolded that we break the law. So I can't let you talk, Linda.
Move to close.
Second.
We'll move on to minutes. Three sets of minutes tonight. Executive session minutes of August 22nd, workshop minutes of August 22nd, and regular session minutes of August 22nd. Have a motion to adopt this?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember... Excuse me, Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
No, good, thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Resolutions 2018-317, resolution approving special event applications. Resolution 2018-318, resolution to refund overpaid taxes for 1706 Park Avenue, Unit 4B. Resolution 2018-319, resolution to credit sewer account for 1302 Summerfield Avenue. 2018-320, resolution authorizing opening and adjusting interest of tax sales certificate immensely partially redeemed. Resolution 2018-321, resolution accepting receipt of the Secure the Shore Grant. Resolution 2018-322, resolution and receipt of Monmouth County Grant from the Division of Aging, Disabilities and Veteran Services. 2018-323, resolution, the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for insertion of special item of revenue in a 2018 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48, Column 4-87, which is a Chapter 159 for the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. And resolution 2018-324, resolution of the City of Asbury Park releasing performance bond for 1003 Bond Street and accepting maintenance bond. Does anybody wish any of those resolution to be pulled from consent? Say non-camp motion to adopt, please.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution, individual resolutions, 2018-325, resolution approving payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman abstains from purchase order 18-00373. Have a motion to adopt, please.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2018-326, resolution authorizing the transfer of interest pursuant to redevelopment agreement between the city and Michael's Development Company, One LP, and redeveloper of certain parcels located within the city of Springwood Avenue redevelopment area. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2018-327 has been withdrawn. Resolution 2018-328, resolution authorizing the MRM for closure proceeding relating to certain real properties located at the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion, please.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2018-329, resolution authorizing the execution of commodity resale agreement with the County of Monmouth. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-330, resolution authorizing execution of a shared services agreement with the County of Monmouth. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-331, resolution authorizing the purchase of oxygen and SCBA field station for the Fire Department. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-332, resolution authorizing the purchase of an ambulance radio. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-333, resolution authorizing the purchase of a mini-split air conditioner. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-334, it's a resolution authorizing the purchase of first net-ready routers and accessories for police vehicles. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-335, resolution authorizing the purchase of Panasonic tablets and accessories for police vehicles. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-336, resolution authorizing the purchase of a shredder for the finance office. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-337, resolution authorizing the purchase of shredders for the Police Department. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?